Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting of Tuesday, May 21st. I am going to turn the meeting over to our mayor for the day, Alec Silvermaster.
It's Alec Silvermaster.
Okay. You are in charge.
All right.
So you get the gavel.
This?
Call it to order. Yeah, just hit it on the table.
All right.
Good.
Is that loud enough?
What we need to order. Speak right in here to the microphone.
Uh, city clerk, call the rule.
Thank you. Councilmember Cloven.
I'm here.
Tillman.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Trupiano.
I'm here.
Mayor for the day Silvermaster.
Here.
Mayor Diaz.
Yes, present.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
And we will let, I want if the family's here to take a photograph of the mayor for the day sitting here leading the parade for us, if you will. And we'll do that immediately after.
The pledge allegiance.
Yes. Ready to stand and follow you.
All right.
Please stand. Please stand.
Do I start now?
You do it.
All right.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now that we've done that, we're now going to call for recognitions and presentations. You just say it and then ask, turn it over to councilmember Cloven. Okay? So first thing, we're going to do recognitions and presentations.
Recognizations and presentations.
But first before that, I want to make sure everybody knows how Mr. Silvermaster got here. The school that he attends did a fundraiser and they had an auction to have the mayor for the day. And by the way, this is about the second or time, third year time in a row that we've done this. And he was the lucky winner. He's the mayor for the day. And coming up on the 28th of May, we're going to take him on a tour of City Hall and the Police Department. So that's when everybody can do that and we appreciate that. So now, you want to say a few words?
Uh.
Nope.
I can't think of anything.
Thank you. Just say thank you.
Thank you.
And now, recognitions and presentations.
Do I just say that?
Yes, recognitions and presentations.
Let's start the recognitions and presentations.
Say councilmember Cloven.
Uh, councilmember Cloven?
Oh.
Do I have to sign those?
Let me sign them.
It's always great to have this celebration and recognition here in our council members. We've been doing this for about 14 years now, going back to the day when councilmember, or Mayor Hank Strafford got together with the CBCA and the Mount Diablo Elementary School and Diablo View Middle School. I think Clayton Valley High School at the time was involved. And we decided to actually recognize students and citizens to exemplify certain character traits in our community, like today's word is integrity. We also have kindness, respect, self-discipline, courage. These are all character traits which we find are really important to instill not only in our children and recognize them when they have them and show those traits at school, but also to recognize those adults who also have those traits as well as we have an ability to recognize those as well. And as we get the last signature from the mayor, I'm going to get Mayor Alex to help me present these today. Are you up for it, Mayor?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Just follow him up there. Who's got the master list?
We're going to do this.
Okay. What?
Oh, I called people.
He'll call them up.
Come on here, Mac.
Yeah, come on over here.
Mayor, why don't you come on over here?
I've elementary.
Excellent.
School of two?
Did you go to Mount Diablo?
Uh, Mount Diablo Elementary.
Perfect.
Well, Alex, Mayor Alex, do you get to help us with this? So we're going to start off today with which school is this?
Um, Mount Diablo Elementary.
All right. Could teachers who are presenting today or the principal Harris come up here and help us with this?
All right. You're going to hand your certificate. Stand here. Principal Harris, that's that one, and she's going to do the first one?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Harris. I'm the principal at Mount Diablo Elementary and I'm joined by four fabulous teachers here tonight. We actually have six recognitions this evening because I wanted to end the year in the midst of the exhaustion and fatigue for a variety of reasons. I wanted to end the year with acknowledging the amazing community that is Clayton and this amazing school that I've had the privilege of working at this year. It's incredible. This is just a snapshot of who I get to experience on a daily basis, so you all should be jealous because they're all amazing. But I just appreciate everyone here tonight, all the families, all the community members. It's really a special place to be. So we're going to get the evening started with Mrs. Brown and she's going to be recognizing Annie.
Annie, come on up here, Annie. Yay, Annie. I wrote a little something up for you because I wanted, hi Alex, by the way. Did you do a good job? Okay. Annie, you are the definition of integrity. A person who has integrity is very honest and they have very high standards for themselves and for others. And that is you. You always do the right thing even when no one is looking and that's a really important quality to have. You embrace Mount Diablo Elementary School's four rules of being kind, responsible, respectful, and safe. I can always count on you to be eager to learn every single day and you always give your best effort. You're helpful in class and even more importantly, you're kind on the playground. That's a really important thing to be. It is my honor to be your teacher and I'm very proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay. So this next one, I get to present on behalf of Mrs. Van Utriv, who's not here tonight, but I, this young man holds a special place in my heart. Even with 746 kids, you will see him in a crowd. So Alejandro, can you come up here?
I like that bow.
So this is from Mrs. V, okay? It is my pleasure to recognize Alejandro with the City of Clayton Do the Right Thing Award for Integrity. Honesty is one of the key tenets of integrity and Alejandro represents all of it. He has a strong moral compass, will always speak his mind, and is always honest. I'm so proud to be your teacher this year. I cannot believe how much you've grown and I am honored that you get this award. Congratulations. All right. And up next is Ms. Waco.
I have the pleasure to be Miles's teacher this year and Miles also exemplifies integrity. Come on up. There he is, very handsome. He always does the right thing, even if it's difficult, and he lives by his values in class, in the playground, and everywhere. And he also looks to others to be for integrity and honesty and he does it with a smile and inspiring us all. And so we feel good about having integrity in our class and also lending a helping hand always. So I'm really proud of you and congratulations for the life skill of integrity. Can I shake your hand? All right.
And up next to recognize Ari, he's not here tonight, is Mrs. Carcamo.
I wish Ari was here tonight because this is an important award and he is a deserving student. Ari has a very strong moral compass and he has a strong sense of right and wrong. He's incredibly self-aware for a fourth grade student. Periodically through the day or after recess, he'll come up and he'll just share with me about an experience he just had and he'll talk about his thought process. And through these conversations, I can tell that Ari places a great importance on trying hard and on kindness. And Ari has a fantastic growth mindset and due to this growth mindset, he's a great student and he's a wonderful classmate and it's my honor to have been his teacher this year.
And up next is Ms. Lovejoy.
Hi, I'm Ms. Lovejoy and this is Julia and I am so happy that I get to be here today to honor her. She is an amazing student and I know I can always count on you for doing the right thing. You are kind and compassionate and you are always looking for ways to help. You are amazing at anticipating the needs of others in a way that is way beyond your years. I am so proud of all your hard work this year and I cannot wait to see you grow.
And last but not least is one of our fifth graders. I didn't see Reagan out there. Okay, so the last recognition is for Reagan Stice and she is in Ms. Fails' class, so I'm going to read a note from Ms. Fail here. Reagan is a model student that I can always count on to do what is right and what is expected. I have had Reagan for two years and she is one of the best students that I've had in all my years of teaching. She's a kind and caring person who is one that has integrity in all that she does. She thinks before acting and assesses situations before she makes a decision about what is the right path to take. I'm so glad that I've had the pleasure to get to know Reagan and teach her in the last days of her education at MDE. So congratulations to Reagan.
Say thank you to the Mount Diablo Elementary School teachers. And next we have Principal Harris from Diablo Valley Middle School.
I am Vicki Wilson. I get the complete distinct privilege and honor to be the principal at Diablo View Middle School. I also, along with Ms. Harris, am finishing my first year out here and I just also would like to thank everybody for such a warm welcome, the parents, the community, the students. And I would have to say, my faculty is probably one of the best faculties ever. So I'll take that challenge to Ms. Harris. So with that being said, I have three amazing students this month that I would like to recognize. My first student is Colton Roberts. So Colton was recognized by Ms. Ridenhour and she says, "Colton exhibits the trait of integrity every day. He is always where he needs to be with the materials required. He does the right thing because it's the right thing to do. He is kind to all students, whether they are his friends or not, and offers a helping hand if it is needed. Colton leads by example on a daily basis and I am so proud to have him as my student." My next student that we are going to recognize this evening is Annalisa Bali. So Annalisa was recognized by Mr. Pishney and he said, "Annalisa is one of the best and most creative students attending DVMS. She averages in the high 90s in both of my classes. I've noticed that she is willing to do the right thing and is helpful to all. Early in the school year, there was a student who was not always making best choices." And Annie was one of the very first people that came to tell me that they were not doing the right thing. I will always be thankful for that. I know I can always count on her to be the best example of integrity in a DVMS student. And our final student for this evening is Sophia Sweeney-Hurd. Sophia's being recognized by Ms. Cherokee and Ms. Cherokee said, "Sophia is an honest, trustworthy, responsible student and I can tell that she holds herself to high moral and academic standards even when no one is looking. I have a poster in my room which states, 'Wisdom is knowing the right path to take; integrity is taking it.'" Sophia is the perfect example of that very quote. Congratulations.
So I've been doing this for a couple of years now as the chair of the Do the Right Thing Committee or Subcommittee. And I got to say, this year it has been an incredible pleasure to work with both principals. Principal Harrison, Principal Wilson have not only bought into our Do the Right Thing program, they have been proactive in getting me the names of their students and have been incredibly enthusiastic in enrolling the teachers in recognizing the students here live again since we've come out of the COVID down years. And it's just been a real fun, pleasurable experience to be able to do this this past year. I'm looking forward to working with you again next year. Thank you both.
Okay, we have one last presentation to make and I'm going to ask the city council to come up and be right with us here. Come on around to, this is the official designation as mayor for the day today, May 21st. And anybody that wants to take photographs, please come up. And we're going to make this presentation to Alex right now. And as I said, he not only gets to be mayor for the day, he also will participate in a tour of City Hall and the Police Department on the 28th. And finally, he's going to get a ride in the Fourth of July Parade in one of our fire engines.
Fire engines?
A real, a real fire engine. Okay. There you go. Congratulations. I'm, we're all very proud of you.
I'm going to put this right up next to my STEM Fair reward.
Okay. All right. Have you got anything else you'd like to say?
Uh, no. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to get some photos now with the family. Great. Thank you. Now we're going to go back to our regular agenda and you're all welcome to stay here for the balance of the evening, but I know many of you have other plans for the evening and celebrate Alex and the mayor for the day. So we're going to go now into item number four on our agenda, which is public comment for non-agenda items. And I know I have two cards. We're going to do non-agenda items, public comment. I have two cards and then we'll also find out if we have anybody on the Zoom. First is James Sinkum.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, new city manager, thank you, chief, and staff. I'm a five-year resident of Clayton. As you guys know, I had an opportunity to meet many of you and speak in person. I live in Jeffrey Ranch Community with my wife Brianna and our two children. We pleased to raise our children and our family in a wonderful community and we're committed to the city of Clayton. I've had the, I'd like to address some concerns regarding the city's strategic business plan, specifically focusing on ADA and capital improvements for infrastructure, access, and safety. Vice Mayor Trupiano and Tillman, I understand that's going to be your area of concern there specifically. Areas to include Mitchell Canyon Road segment, Clayton Road to Pine Hollow Road. This stretch requires significant improvements for accessibility and safety, as we indicated. The sidewalk from Mount Diablo Elementary to downtown Clayton, this is Mount Zion Drive to Oak Street, the sidewalk needs to be made ADA compliant. Citywide sidewalk and road improvements, overall enhancements are needed for better infrastructure, as you're aware. With the current One Bay Area Grant, O-BAG II, there's concern about rushing projects without a comprehensive strategic plan that aligns with the Vision Zero Initiative recently adopted by the city council. This rushed approach might not fully address our community's needs. My understanding is the current grant funds are earmarked for paving a segment of the sidewalk on the west side of road between Four Oaks and Pine Hollow Road. The scope is insufficient, in my opinion, for the broader community requirements. I propose the following specific improvements. One, flashing pedestrian crossing at Four Oaks Lane and Mitchell Canyon Road. This is essential for children's safety as there's been incidents of children being hit by cars in this area. Two, widen Mitchell Canyon Road and install sidewalks and bike lanes. Adding sidewalks on both sides and a bike lane to this narrow and hazardous road is crucial. Three, remodel the sidewalk from Mount Diablo Elementary to downtown Clayton. This includes removing railroad tie steps and ensuring ADA compliance with safer, accessible pathways. Four, traffic calming measures including speed humps. Five, adjust the quarry operations of hours, shifting the time from 8:30 to 8:30 a.m. The school time is 8:00 a.m. and that would allow children a safer half an hour for parents to leave and for people to get to them from school. These improvements are vital for safety and accessibility. Funding improvements, estimated about 1 million, having talking to the city engineer. We can consider the following, city manager, I'd love an opportunity to speak to you one-on-one. Property parcel taxes, grant gas tax funding, ARPA funds, 1.4 million. Measure J, Contra Costa Transport Authority funding through Ken Carlson District 4. Grants, O-BAG II donations from the quarry, consider easement benefits. California State Park funds, easement to the park entrance, donations from the CBCA, Rotary Club, GoFundMe, other donations, and city budget. I know I'm on time here, last paragraph. I'd issue, this issue is not only impersonal to my family, but it's critical for the whole community. February 6, I submitted a letter from the Mount Diablo Elementary Principal to you all advocating these concerns, also with a change.org campaign with over 1,000 signatures supporting these improvements from people in our community. I attached some photos of my son. This week I had the privilege of taking him on a Skipholini's trip for a school field trip. Unfortunately, I carried him down the staircase with all of his friends to downtown Clayton over the railroad ties. That really hurt his dignity, his friends, you know, that were watching him as I carried him down the hill and I just want you to know how important this issue to me, not only those, the children who, speaking to parents who have held children in the intersection at Mitchell Canyon, how much that meant to them. I'm a firefighter, public servant, over 20-year veteran. This means a lot to me. So I wanted to reiterate that. I wanted to reiterate those priorities and listening to the striping from four lanes to two lane at your most recent council, I think this falls very much in line with a priority for City Clayton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is Nicholas Spade. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There's a timer on the screen. Thank you.
Yep. I'll keep this brief. It's Nicholas Spada. I've been here for over a decade now. Jimmy's a neighbor of mine. He's a fire captain and I don't know if he mentioned, but as far as carrying, his child's in a wheelchair, so that's why he has a lot of issues. And I'm a little more nervous than I thought I'd be. I apologize for my voice, but my big issue is with the quarry. I understand we have, you know, a contract with them, but I was kind of going over it today and just seeing what the last thing was. And to my understanding, it's going to end in 2055. I'll be 75 years old when that happens. And so I live on Mitchell Canyon and all the trucks will line up on Clayton Road and then seven o'clock on the dot, I don't even need to set my alarm because I can hear the diesel trucks coming up and just, you know, it's so loud. And then coming to a stop as well. I'm kind of by the old firehouse right there where Clayton Road and Mitchell Canyon meet, so I'm in a tough spot there. But yeah, and the breaks and the rocks and the damage it's causing. So honestly, this, I don't know what to do because I see there's a contract in place and I can't be the first one to maybe have some issues with the trucks, but I would just lean on you guys for any ideas you might have. I looked at the noise ordinance, but that's at seven o'clock. Can we move it to maybe 8:30, nine o'clock and then kids can get to school safely? Maybe that's an option. I was also hoping that we could have all the trucks go Ignatio and make a left on Pine Hollow and just avoid Clayton altogether and go into that entrance. But I don't know the logistics of that either, so maybe that's not an option. But I'm just trying to think of something. I would love to get, you know, sleep in during the week if I could and not be woken up by trucks before I'm almost dead. So thank you for listening to me. That's all I got. I wish I could give more time to my friend Jimmy here, but thank you for listening and I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Spade. Next, we have Lauren Kendorf.
Good evening, council and staff members. I just want to once again reiterate something I have said before. I still have concern as we go into the hiring process for so many positions in the community here at City Hall that we understand somehow what's been going on the last five, six years and all this revolving door. And I just want to, I feel like you can't solve something if you don't know what it is and I'm not sure that anybody here does. I wish we had looked more into this as now we go into another round of finding people who will come to work and stay to work. So please, as you work through this process with, yeah, with the headhunters, I can't think of what you call them, let's get this right this time. It's not fair to our community to have so much change and for whatever reasons, I hear this reason, I hear that reason, but we've got to get it right and I hope you really do understand what's been happening and make it not happen anymore. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kendorf. I have no more cards from, you didn't fill out a card?
You know how it goes, Jim.
Okay. Make sure, please, you do fill out a card.
Of course, as always. Good evening, council members and citizens of Clayton. My name is Scott Denzilow and I live in Dana Hills. I'm also a board member of Clayton Pride and I wanted to personally invite the entire city to join us in celebration of Pride Month on Sunday, June 2nd. city to join us in celebration of Pride Month on Sunday, June 2, downtown Clayton at 10:00 a.m. What started out as a truly organic grassroots Clayton event has grown exponentially and tremendously each year, and we now have over 60 groups marching, over 40 informational tables in the Grove, and are expecting over 6,000 people to attend. Let us not forget, our little town of Clayton was the first in Contra Costa County to throw such a parade. This year, we are honored to have U.S. Representative Mark Bisagni not only marching in the parade, but acting as the keynote speaker. Excuse me. We are privileged to have Eddie Bresson, Mayor of Concord, Ken Carlson, Contra Costa County Supervisor, Cindy Darling, Mayor Pro Tem of Walnut Creek, Laura Nakamura, Concord City Council, Carlin Obringer, Concord Vice Mayor, Matt Rinn, Mayor of Pleasant Hill, Chanel Scales Preston, Pittsburgh City Council, Shannon Shaw, Vice Mayor of Oakley, Kevin Wilk, Walnut Creek City Council, Anissa Williams, Mayor of Oakley, Monica E. Wilson, Mayor Pro Tem of Antioch, and we have members of both the local and regional press marching with us. And of course, it's our wonderful honor to have our own Clayton City Council members, Peter Cloven and Holly Tillman. Not only marching, but as part of our Clayton Pride Board, your countless hours and efforts to the city and to this organization are appreciated by so many. And finally, I want to thank all the folks that have signed up and devoted their time to helping with this event. It's going to be a beautiful thing to watch it all come to fruition again, so thank you, everybody. I want to take the rest of this time, the rest of my time, take a moment of silence for all the children and adults in Clayton who don't feel safe coming out, who don't feel comfortable coming out to their parents, or who don't have parents, who show support outwardly by bringing their children to events such as this. And it's not just about children. I know somebody in town who has some of the same challenges dealing with coming out, and this parade is just as much for him as it is for the children. I have about 25 seconds left. Can we all please take a moment of silence for the unheard children and citizens of Clayton?
Thank you for your time.
I don't have any other cards. Anybody else out there that hasn't filled a card out but would like to speak on non-agenda items, please? None? City Clerk, do we have anybody online?
We do have one caller.
Nobody online?
We do.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
Meredith Galentley, your microphone is available.
Hello, yes, I wanted to, thank you for having me. I want to encourage everybody to come on out to the Clayton Pride Parade. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's the first Sunday of Pride Month, June 2, and it starts at 10:00 a.m. Really excited to see everybody there. That's all.
There are no other speakers.
That's it? Thank you. Then I'm closing, public comment on a non-agenda item, and we move on to the consent calendar. Anybody have any questions on the minutes that are being submitted? None? Okay, any public comment on the consent calendar? Anybody online?
There are no speakers online.
Okay, then I'm gonna close and bring it back for action on the City Council.
Move approval?
By Cloven.
I'm sorry, in the whom is the second?
We both said it, it doesn't matter, just pick a person.
Pick one.
Will you please call a rule?
Yes. On that motion, Councilmember Cloven.
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
You have five eyes.
Good, thank you, and that closes item number five on consent calendar. We now move to item number 6A, which is the city manager and staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm gonna keep my report brief here, and again, just share with the council and the community that we've been knee-deep in budget preparations. We've had weekly budget and audit committee meetings, and we'll continue to have those. I'd like to apologize to the council and to the public for not recognizing that we should have recorded those meetings. The first two meetings were not recorded. This morning's meeting was, and we'll be meeting next week, and going forward, we'll continue to record those meetings. And so, but I will tell you, but your staff, your finance advisor, that I'm gonna introduce here and let her introduce herself, and also our HR advisor, who I'm also going to introduce and let her introduce herself, our staff with our accounting tech, Jennifer, they are working very hard in pulling this budget together. The committee's working hard alongside us, and so I am pleased to report that we're making significant progress. I labeled this kind of as a bridge budget, because I am an interim city manager, and it's really important that we recognize that we're going back through and cleaning up the budget, looking for opportunities to improve, but really to make sure that we leave the gate here on July 1 with a solid foundation, a foundation for us to build upon. And so, although the budget does not have a lot of frills and a lot of excitement to it, it does set up the next administration, working with this council, to really move forward in a meaningful way to provide services to the community. There is, it's no secret to anyone, there's not a city in the Bay Area that doesn't need more money to provide services to their communities, but part of it is prioritizing, looking at what our highest needs are and making sure that our resources match those needs. And again, working with the department heads, especially with your Public Works Department, both with your city engineer and your maintenance superintendent, we're really looking at long-term needs, not just the short-term fixes. And so, there is a lot of heavy lifting that's going on behind the scenes, and wanted to let the council know that and let the public know that we're working diligently. Again, these meetings are open to the public, you're welcome to attend, and they are posted on the website, and they are going forward, as of this meeting this morning, being recorded, so you can also go back and watch those meetings. I am excited to share, back, I think, at the May 7 meeting, I shared with the community and with the council that we have engaged two professionals to help us while we look at the needs of the city in terms of our staffing needs, and our finance director took a job as a finance director in the city of Sonoma, and so we brought on Regina Rubier, who I introduced to you all in name, but didn't give her a chance to introduce herself to you all. I'd like to ask the city clerk to invite her to the screen and introduce herself to you, and then I'll move on to our HR advisor. Regina, you're here, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Rubier. As Adam mentioned, I am currently helping the City of Clayton and their Finance and Budget Committee with getting the 2024, 25 fiscal year budget up and running. I feel that we are on track and ready to go for next month's adoption. I have been doing city budgets for about 22 years now. I'm currently employed with Contra Costa County Fire as their Chief of Administrative Services, so I work with Chief Brocharde and Chief McAllister hand-in-hand to develop that budget and get that one implemented, and we run that budget all year long. As Adam mentioned, this is a year-long process, this is not a six-week process. So, that's me in a nutshell. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina, and I'd like to add, because this is a consolidated effort, and I've done this in the past in other cities that I've worked, because we're working with two council members during the Budget and Audit Committee, and so we would like to invite the other three council members, as we start publishing information, to come and meet with Regina and myself, or just with Regina, doesn't matter, but to make sure that as we, as this information becomes available to you all and to the public, that you have some time to walk through it versus just coming to a council meeting and getting it at a council meeting. So, I know that Regina will make herself available, as I will. The second person I'd like to invite to introduce herself is Elsie Okio. Elsie has joined us to help with HR services. As you know, Amy Walker, who was your HR Manager/Executive to the city manager, she has taken a job in the city of Napa for the Water and Treatment District in Napa, and so we needed HR support. A big thanks to Stephanie, your city clerk here, who has also taken on some of those responsibilities, but as Elsie joins the team, she will transition some of those HR duties onto her plate while we continue through the permanent transition in terms of the restaffing. And if I can introduce, Elsie, please introduce yourself and say a few words.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elsie Okio, and I am really excited and happy to join the Clayton team. I have been doing HR for over 15 years now, I started from the public, I mean, from the private sector and transitioned to the public sector. I am really looking forward to working with each and every one of you, and to, you know, make City of Clayton the best, you know, the best as we can. So, this is my first time joining the city council meeting, and of course, tomorrow I will be onsite, so, and I believe as we move on, I will be able to actually meet everyone in person eventually. So, thank you very much for having me, and I am really looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions, and again, excited to have Regina and Elsie joining our team.
Any questions of council for staff or the city manager? None? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on now. That completes item number 6A. We'll move on to item 7, which is public hearings, and there are no public hearings tonight, so done with that. We move on to item 8A, first of two action items, and this is to receive a progress report and presentation from ClimatTech on the overall comprehensive. You call it what you want, I'll call it what I want. Anyway, pardon the interruption, Mr. City Engineer, but now you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I get the pleasure to introduce ClimatTech tonight. Now, ClimatTech will be doing a short presentation. We encourage questions. As you're aware, this project was being overseen by Amy prior, so I have come in and helping transition on the staff side, but ClimatTech, for the most part, is both the contractor and designer of the city's energy efficiency projects. I won't belabor the point, but you're aware of the projects, and they're gonna discuss it, but it's, overall, it's a investment into the city's infrastructure, in particular, their buildings, facilities, to not only conserve energy, but to be able to generate its own energy and not have to pay for it on the grid and, long-term, save money by doing that process. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Bernadette. She's spoken before to the council, and she'll go through the slides, and as you're aware, feel free to ask questions. They are in progress with their project right now. They've done sort of the soft elements of within the buildings and the assessments, and now gonna be moving forward to more of the hard infrastructure elements pretty soon. So, I'll turn it over to Bernadette.
Thank you, Mr. Thies.
Thank you, Larry. I guess I'm done. Larry said it all. Are you gonna bring up the PowerPoint? Oh, great. I only need my notes for thanks, because a project of this magnitude is really collaborative effort, so pardon me while I put the readers on. Thank you, Mayor Diaz, council and city manager, Paulitzer, nice to meet you in person. Really proud to be a part of this project, quite honestly, that had the support of this council and a 5-0 vote. We're really excited to continue to deliver this and really kind of give you this update today. Our project manager, Chris Anderson, is on the East Coast today, so he passed on his thanks. He wanted to thank Larry especially for stepping in, and also the staff and administration. It's been really collaborative on all levels here at the city, so thank you for that. And of course, I have to give special thanks to the ad hoc committee, Jeff Wong and Kim Trupiano, who have since, before we even had the first contract approval, while we were just developing kind of this, contributed so many ideas, and Peter and Holly, and everyone's just been so involved, and pardon me, Councilmember Cloven and Councilmember Tillman, have, everybody's just weighed in so much on this really great project, and so I'm excited to share it with you today. Go to the next slide. I was told to give. Yes. So, where have we been? Process to date, we started with a competitive selection process. We did, in advance of even having a contract approved, just kind of refresh everybody's memory, we submitted the Net Energy Metering 2.0 to PG&E. That allowed you to take advantage of the more favorable financials of having the grandfathering of PG&E's rate structures that help with the overproduction of solar being more financially beneficial. We also submitted a really great CEC 1% loan that was approved, and we had the project approved in April, and then in August, the CEC loan was when we kind of started the clock as far as getting this project formally underway. We've been doing the, we've already completed the utility baseline development, which is where we walked all the facilities, walked all the parks, looked at all the expense that the city had, at the kilowatt-hours that they use, the water use that's already been underway, developed that. Then we did the engineering site assessments, where we walked all the parks and walked all those facilities, and, you know, after doing that, brought that all together, and like, here's the program possibilities. What are the priorities of the city that we want to incorporate into this? So, went really well. We've been doing ad hoc meetings, so the Ad Hoc Energy Committee with Jeff Wong and Kim Trupiano has been just so keeping us informed as we transition at the city, and so I really appreciate that, too. And then, we're doing it. So, program implementation is underway, and the next slide will be a little progress chart we put together. Oh, pardon me, wrong order. So, here's the total program at a glance. So, infrastructure improvements across all the work that's being done is $2,049,000, so that includes equipment, design, engineering, labor, commissioning, permitting, all the steps that need to make this go are included in that. The lifecycle savings, so over the life of the equipment, $4.7 million, so obviously, that's a very positive number. I have to make one correction on the funding sources. At the time, we were considering, when the program was initially approved, the city was considering a tax-exempt lease purchase. That was not necessary. So, actually, there's two funding sources toward this outside of utility incentives, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. The city put $146,000 toward this project, and then the bulk of that 2.0, basically $2 million, was that 1% CEC loan. And I have to point out, the city was one of the last to get, like, the waiting list went to almost two years right after your approval, so great timing, good job. Next slide. Thank you, Stephanie. So, just kind of staying on that funding, something we didn't talk a whole lot about, because this was essentially being fleshed out through the IRS, is the Inflation Reduction Act. So, outside of the $2 million that was essentially funded through the CEC 1%, the city is also going to qualify for an Inflation Reduction Act reimbursement. This used to be, and I won't read this whole thing to you, I promise, but this used to be something that would be paid to like a third-party implementer as a reimbursement for work done for greenhouse gas-reducing measures that qualify, and then a city or other public agency would hope that would get passed along. This is now direct pay, and that is new through the tax provision that was approved in 2022. So, for anything turned on 2023, meaning the solar gets turned on, permission to operate between 2023 and 2032, gets about a base grant of about 30%, so Clayton can get 30% reimbursement, which we did quick math, this is a projection, of almost $300,000, which will be able to be put into your budget toward other infrastructure needs or as the city deems fit. So, that's really good news. Next slide. Next slide. So Mayor Wan asked for kind of the steps. It's a pretty, pretty simple process. There's pre-registration. We are not financial advisors. We're not municipal advisors. So we recommend bringing in a financial advisor or tax attorney to kind of bring the city forward legally in doing this. We would support the city with any documentation they would need to complete that paperwork. Also, you'd need to get your permission to operate from PG&E. So that timing can be, we've seen anywhere from one to four months for a PTO to be issued. That's the date that marks the moment in time for when you would file for this reimbursement. So file by deadline. Question, Mayor? Nope, okay. All right. Next up?
Thank you.
Thank you. So sorry for all the words on this slide, but essentially wanted to show you just everything that is encompassed in this project. I won't, it's got lighting. The lighting is completed, as we'll talk about on the next slide. Water conservation efforts, heating and cooling across city-owned facilities, building automation systems to help with temperature control comfort. And then, of course, the big shining star, the renewable energy, which also includes some EV charging as well. Next slide. So here's the progress report. Because there's so many steps in this process, I mean, we're nine months in. The design is essentially 100% complete. I'll talk a little bit more about the water study and where that's at. Permits are not required on everything, so the permits are done for the lighting where required. And then permitting is very close, very underway right now for the solar PV and EV charging. We've already ordered everything. Everything is coming in on time. We're not really having a lot of problems with supply chain for this project, which is really great news. And then we've just got kind of our estimated completion date there that was provided by Chris Anderson, your project manager, for when we're expected to be done. So we are on schedule, in fact, a little ahead of schedule, which is great news. Next slide. So we wanted to do some before and after pictures. Now, I took the after picture. This is on Terra Drive. Those lights are white. I know they look yellow in this picture, but there's the before. You can see there was kind of a blend of white light, yellow light. The city has a mix of PG&E-owned lights and city-owned lights. So we changed all the bulbs in the city that are city-owned streetlights to the higher efficiency HVAC, or, excuse me, LED. But then, so I went back and I got it kind of at dusk, so I think that's what weighs in. But those are two white lights, just to match the picture per your request, council member one. And then you can see also some other bulbs that were changed and the great 60-year anniversary party coming up, too. Next slide. So underway right now is essentially updating your irrigation controls. You might remember from the first presentation, there was a lot of staff attention and labor hours put towards maintaining the parks, keeping the water the way it should be. So moving to automation is going to be a really big win for the city whenever it comes to that piece and giving staff some of their time back and just really kind of bringing that technology into the 21st century as well. Next slide. There's the new controllers. Next slide. This is Endeavor Hall. So on the right-hand side are the old units and on the left-hand, excuse me, the left-hand side is the old units and the right-hand side are the new units. This was great. These came in two months early and Chris was able to get them implemented immediately, which was, which was really great. So we've got some high efficiency and some savings coming from that as well. So I thought it was a great picture. Next slide. So these are just kind of sample for solar. Whenever you have your own solar, you won't need pictures to see what it looks like, but we're doing a carport solar, which you'll see in an upcoming image. Just wanted to show you guys kind of what the panels look like. Next slide. So we have, this is the revision, and thank you to Larry for his assistance with this as we worked through some easement issues that surfaced in the, you know, kind of more detailed development phase. But the really great story of this solar PV is that this is going to make the first net zero energy complex for any Contra Costa County city, which, you know, which will include your PD, your maintenance yard, city hall, and this library. So all that space will be net zero energy, which is a really huge win for, for the city. I'm really looking forward to that, moving forward to completion. Next slide. And the EV charging is level three. So that is the fast charge EV charging. And that's going to be right outside of the, but kind of by the rock out here, right here at the library. This is, just to kind of make mention, this is, you still have your number of ADA required handicap spaces, but this EV charging station will also be a handicap accessible space. That's important to know. And this can be for, for public use, also for any EV city-owned vehicles will be able to utilize that as well. Next slide. So this was kind of the baseline. We just wanted to kind of tell the story of what the utility expense was. This was based on July 2021 through June 2022, when we started developing this program. You can see that the electric spend nearly $300,000, the water over $300,000. So that's definitely where we're putting some attention in this project is what is going to bring those costs down, especially as utility rates continue to rise. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about utility increases. Everybody here probably has PG&E and you may or may not have solar in your home. Commercial accounts are feeling a special, especially high pinch due to some, the 13% that was approved through the California Public Utility Commission that was approved for January. Then back in, was it March? Yeah, March, there was another emergency increase of $2 billion to be spread across commercial accounts, which brought most agencies, like public agencies such as yourselves, up over 20% in one year. For reference, when we typically, we do projects like this across the state, school districts, cities, water districts, you know, all the public agencies who do this type of process to upgrade infrastructure while lowering and mitigating the impact of utility bills say, jeez, what, 20%? It used to be 3%, 4%, 5%. This is decades since we've seen increases like this. So we were asked by the ad hoc committee to kind of, what is, what is the vision based on what we're seeing right now with our utility spend and the utility rates rising? What will we expect our savings to be? This is kind of a good news, bad news situation. The good news is you're doing the work that is going to mitigate the impact of these crazy rate hikes. The bad news is you're still going to be paying more because it's such an astronomical jump in those utility rates. So where your savings, when we originally projected this back in 20, for 2022, was 138,000 in year one. So post-implementation, year one, would be 138,000 based on the new increases factored. This was done by our engineers and our baseline energy systems team is going to be closer to 198,000. But know that that means that those rates are going up, too, right alongside with that. But at least you're doing the work that you wouldn't be, at least you're not paying it. It's a cost avoidance story. Next slide. And of course, with any program like this, there's sustainability benefits as well, which is really great. So this is annualized. So that is this, the greenhouse gas reductions from the work that the city is doing is the, these are annual equivalency. So that's the same as doing each of these things every single year for the life of the program, which is a really impressive story, sustainability story. Next slide. So next steps, we're just going to continue with the project, continuing with implementation, staying on schedule as best as possible. There's always outliers that are out of our control, but so far, so good. Heating and cooling is due to be done end of July. The water conservation modernizations and the tracking for that by July 2024. The building automation systems is tracking to be finished July 2024. And the solar PV, we're looking for end of September this year. And that's it. Questions?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions from the city?
Oh, my gosh, wait, that isn't it. This is so cool.
We've got one more.
Sorry, I forgot.
Okay, okay.
Clayton has had two press releases since even just beginning this program at the mayor's council. I wanted to point out that the Clayton Concord Pioneer did the, from the mayor's conference presentation. And then you guys had a really great write-up more recently where each of you had a really nice quote and really in support of the program. Really appreciate that, too. It was really neat to see. And it's not about Climatic, it's about you all and your story. So we weren't in that, which is great. Now I'll take questions. Mayor Diaz, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Trupiano.
I have several, even though I'm on the committee, I still have questions, right? Because I, I love this subject. And Bern, thank you so much for being such a good partner to the city and walking us through the presentation tonight. So I have a couple of questions. So if we estimate that the solar PV project will be done September 2024, and then you said PG&E has one to four months before?
What we've seen, yeah.
What we've seen. And that's kind of the flip the switch?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have to wait until they flip the switch before we can apply for the IRA 300,000?
Yes.
Okay. So that's kind of, so that could be, could be in our 2024, 2025 fiscal budget?
It could.
If all goes, okay. So just, that was one question I had. Also, the repayment of the loan, which we were fortunate enough to get the 1%, we're doing that, is that an annual payment or by annual payment?
Yeah, it's, it's two payments. And you have actually already started that process, like, you have that already. And I'll offer to you, city manager, if you wanted us to speak with your kind of interim finance, we've already reached out to our operations team to be able to get them up to speed on, on that process if you need any help with that.
Terrific. Because again, we're working on the budget right now and to incorporate that. And so I had one other question on the lighting that has been transferred to LED. Are we getting the rebates on that and the reduced rates from PG&E now, now that we've transferred the lighting over?
I can check. I'll, I'll have to look into that with Stephanie.
I forgot to ask you that, yeah, in our meeting.
Yeah.
Because now that we've transferred, and just so everyone knows, PG&E also owns about 300 streetlights of their own, under no obligation to transfer those from sodium to LED, but they are thinking about having a phased project here in Clayton. And so there is some enthusiasm behind that. So if you still see a sodium light here and there, we don't own it. PG&E owns it.
That's an important clarification. Thank you. Very good.
And ARPA, we talked about, and then the water assessment. You said you were going to talk a little bit more about that.
Yes, so the, so the water study, so there's kind of two parts to the water study that we're doing here. The irrigation study is 100% complete. The irrigation materials have been, you know, the equipment needed to do those upgrades is already ordered and underway. The second part of the water study is a, kind of a deep dive into the billing portion through Contra Costa Water District. And so we've initiated that. I would say we'd have a really solid update for you on how that's going by our next ad hoc and ask that you bring that back to council, you know, to share with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jeff?
I just have, it's not really a question, but perhaps it's a request. Perhaps our city manager can assign someone to be on point for when we actually do flip the switch to do the necessary administrative work to apply for the IRA properly. It could easily get lost and it's several months down the road, so it may be used. We'll, we'll, we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. But if, if we could take an action to make sure we have that on the docket.
And I'm sure we'll stay on top of that in our ad hoc meetings, too.
Oh, and thank you very much for all the work that Climatic has been doing. It's been, it's been great working together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wan. Thank you.
No, we do thank you. You have been a true partner, and it's always been a delight working with you. And Larry, I'm glad that you're joining us now and overseeing this, the right person at the right time, right? And so thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Anyone else? I have a couple of, nobody else does, and I'm just going to go through these real quickly. And starting with the existing irrigation controllers, you mentioned networked and non-networked. Tell me, does that mean they're not hooked together?
Yeah, like you would be able, when they're networked, you'll be able to kind of control, like, whether it's weather-based applications. It's, it's more automated so that you don't have a physical person having to go out to turn on or set the timer. It's all built into it already so that, kind of that ease in maintaining your green space, maybe even with a phone.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. On the sample solar layouts, these obviously look like other facilities. I don't recall in Clayton where we have, you know, covered parking and that, that would allow a lot of mouthless on, where we have to build new structures, what the...
We'll be building those structures for you, and it's going to be right over, kind of at the maintenance yard on its way towards city hall. And that's also for police, you know, to shade the police vehicles, keep the equipment from burning out as it has in the past, and also give them some charging stations to get their, keep their equipment charged up right while they're parked there, too.
And then finally, my other question is on the annual sustainability benefits. And I'm just curious on the gasolines of, or excuse me, gallons of gasoline that are saved. What's the estimate? How do you figure that out? Are you looking at all the city facilities?
I'm going to point to the engineer for that one.
Okay.
EPA calculator from the federal government. Takes your KWH saved, your therm saved, and then converts it over.
Yeah, you need to come up to the microphone so that the world out there in Claytonville can hear you.
Claytonville.
Claytonville.
And Climatic.
Yeah, exactly. No, it's an EPA calculator from the federal government. So looking at the therm saved, which is gas, and then looking at KWH saved, it converts it over to these metrics that you see in front of you in terms of other resources saved.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions from here before I open it up to public questions and comments?
Just confirming your irrigation controllers. They do have a sensor for pressure differentiation. So if there is a line leak, it will automatically shut off to prevent the water from losing this.
Good reminder. Thank you. Should have mentioned that. The flow meter.
Absolutely. And the second question was, just so the citizens out there can understand, the difference between LED versus sodium light, what's, what's the annual use differential? Is it like 10 times more for sodium? Is it 20 times more for sodium lights? Do, do we, do we know what that, that figure is?
I think it's three times.
So I, I, I don't, I don't know what the number is.
A lot, a lot. We'll get that back to ad hoc as well.
And, and the next question is, you said that PG&E has 300 out there. What percentage is that of the total number of lights we have?
You have seven, about 700 of your own. And so they have a considerable amount, you know. I think the city, we had been looking and considering potentially buying the PG&E lights if they're open to that.
Well, that was kind of the question. Is it, is it cost effective to, to replace it ourselves? I assume we're paying the electricity for the sodium lights as well. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's one.
So they gave us a couple of options. So when I met with PG&E in February, they said there are three potential options, but there's nothing concrete yet. So I say this with caution, right? One is they convert themselves, the, you know, lights that they own over to LED, or, and they pay for that, or they, we do the work and we charge them for it, or they give us the ownership of the lights. So I think that's still in an assessment phase right now.
Well, you guys are negotiating that, essentially are working with PG&E on that kind of directly. But you do have a really high-quality representative in this area who's kind of advocating on your behalf internally, just from conversations I've shared with the ad hoc committee. So I'm very hopeful that the city's able to capture additional savings, not through our program, but through the efforts the city's making to have them chip in, if you will.
And I think Jim Warburton just had a meeting with PG&E last week, so, yeah.
Great.
Anyone else? Okay. Now I'm going to ask if the public has any comments on this matter. Please come forward.
Three questions.
State your name and please limit your comments of three minutes.
Very brief, yep. James Cinkay, Jimmy. Three quick questions on the Climatic report. One, maybe a silly question, but do we have any city well use or are we all on the municipal water district? water district?
Ministers.
Okay, and is, was that a consideration for the city moving forward, or any future goals for increased well usage, and would there be a, you know, a financial reduction for that?
It wasn't in the scope of this project.
Understood, no doubt, just something to consider in the future, since we're talking about water reduction and energy savings. Also PV stations, scalability, do we have scalability for increased charging stations as more demand? So with the current system, for example, you know, additional parking spaces, maybe beyond the scope of just city employees to include more public stations?
I think we talked about that in a Phase Two, right?
Phase Two.
Other locations.
It's been discussed, but it, it wouldn't be as part of the scope of this phase, but it could be future phases.
Okay, great.
It's a pretty high initial cost for the-
Sure, sure, I figured as, as more demand, we'll start to see more electric cars, you know, you look at the automaker demand, so. Lastly, is the fire station number 11 a city asset, or is it COCO Fire, and then any needs for PV over there? Photovoltaic?
It's not a city asset.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should comment on this item? Not closing the public comment on that now, bringing it back, it's, and there's no action required by us, it's just a presentation and-
Pardon me, Mayor?
A progress report.
Sorry, pardon me, Mayor, and just for the record, there are no speakers online.
Okay, thank, nobody online. Pardon me for that gross oversight. Okay, thank you very much, and there's an echo in here someplace, but anyway, that completes this item. Thank you very much from the ClimatTech people. Did I pronounce it okay for you? Thank you very much. All right, that concludes item number 8A, and we will move to item 8B, and our City Manager is going to reclassify the accounting technician position to accountant, and reclassify the city clerk position to city clerk slash assistant to the City Manager, and add the position of Assistant City Manager slash Administrative Services Director, and amend the City of Clayton salary schedule for these positions. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, I'm going to make this item fairly quick and to the point. I think what's important for the public to recognize is that we have vacancies, and when you have vacancies, it's an opportunity to look at the needs of the team and the needs of the city, and also look at efficiencies when we, when we evaluate these vacancies, rather than just you have a vacancy and you just refill it as, fill it just as you would do, without giving that assessment. You all, City of Clayton, its council, had a report from MRG, Municipal Services Group, or what does MRG stand for? That's a good, I should make sure I tell you what these, yes, yes, Municipal Resource Group. They did a report back in May of 2023 that looked at the overall needs of the city, both staffing and operational. And you have moved forward on filling some of the recommendations there, including promoting your supervisor in public works to superintendent. You are considering elevating a sergeant to lieutenant, that was something that was originally on the agenda when I started on April 15th, that was on, on a future forecast for your April 16th meeting. There's still discussions going on with that, but there's the intent to move forward with the promotion of the lieutenant. But also in there was recommendation of creating an Administrative Services Director position, an accountant position, and so absent that report, working with staff over my five weeks here on the team, we've been evaluating the needs. Your Finance Director, as I mentioned earlier, has taken a job for the City of Sonoma, and your HR manager slash executive, executive assistant to the City Manager has also taken a job in the City of Napa. So evaluating those needs and the, the team that you have, both your city clerk and your accounting technician have taken on additional responsibilities. But now that we have Elsie helping us on HR and Regina helping us in finance, we've taken a look at the duties that the city clerk is performing and the duties that the accounting technician have been performing, and as you've read in the report, they're doing above and beyond those duties. And so recognizing MRG's recommendation that we would benefit from having an accountant position, we are asking the council tonight to reclassify the accounting technician position and, and create the, the accountant position. So that's one of the requests that we're making. The second request that we're making is recognizing that your HR manager also served as the executive assistant to the City Manager, is, is taking the opportunity to give that responsibility with a different label, assistant to the City Manager slash city clerk to your city clerk. Many small cities, that's the structure, is the city clerk also provides support to the City Manager, who also provides, that also provides support to the City Council. The City Manager and the City Council work closely together, as does the city clerk, and so this is a natural opportunity for the city clerk to play a more important role in that coordination. It also gives the assistant to the City Manager an opportunity to take on special projects, projects that don't naturally go to a department, and, and it gives, it gives the City Manager a person that can take on that level of professional skill, the, the skill necessary to take on those additional projects. The, the third request that we're asking the council tonight is to consider consolidating the Finance Director position and the HR manager position into an Administrative Services Director position slash Assistant City Manager. Again, many small cities, that's the common title. It creates another level of leadership in the organization, as the assistant City Manager responsibilities fall into categories of supporting staff, oversight of projects, especially large projects, working with the City Manager and the council on goals and objectives, and, and moving those into implementation measures, so that we can move those projects forward. And then obviously filling in when the City Manager is out of town, on vacation or attending training, that you still have someone really that's second in command. And so that Assistant City Manager job is, is very important. The Administrative Services duties would be absorbing all of the financial duties, all the financial responsibilities, and all the HR responsibilities into that position. So when you look at Administrative Services in other cities, they're overseeing HR and finance, again, consistent with the MRG report, we're making that recommendation to the council to consider the consolidation. Obviously, you have to figure out how to pay for all of this, and that's one of the areas that, you know, that we'll continue to work through the budget, but in this case, as we look at those immediate vacancies, rather than going and filling the Finance Director position and filling the HR manager position and leaving the accounting technician and the city clerk position as is, by doing this based on our recommendation, there's a net savings of roughly $20,000. So there's a significant savings in consolidating the HR manager and the Finance Director position into one, into the Administrative Services Director, that is a roughly 50, $50,000 to $60,000 savings, and then with the modest increases to the salaries of the city clerk, that would now take on the title of City Clerk Assistant to the City Manager, and the accounting technician, a modest increase to their salary to accountant, they are now in the positions to be able to provide a high level of service to the Administration Department and obviously to the city, and you have a net savings of roughly $20,000. I probably should have told Stephanie, our clerk, to forward the slides, so why don't we do the version of, of going through the slides, because I just read right through the ones in front of me. So if you go to the next slide, this is the purpose, we, we've talked about this, and the mayor introduced it at the beginning, next slide. The background, talked about the staff vacancies of the HR manager, executive assistant to the City Manager, Finance Director, and then establishing these three positions, the Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Director, the Accountant, and the City Clerk Assistant to the City Manager, next slide. And then staff's recommendation, and we'll come back to this at the end, but this obviously is, it, I, I highlighted the words adding, because we're, we're adding a position that I think will serve the city well, it will support the City Manager, it provides additional leadership to work with the executive management team, promote, it's important that we are promoting those that work in the organization that do a good job, and recognize their good work, and then realign, you know, making sure that we're always assessing our operation and our effectiveness in delivering services, and realigning our resources with, with, with that goal. Next slide, please. Staff has introduced this at our May 7th Budget and Audit Committee meeting, and continued the discussion at the May 14th Audit, Budget and Audit Committee. Staff received the support from the Budget and Audit Committee at its May 14th meeting in consensus. We didn't vote, we just asked if we had their support, and the two members, which are Councilmember Juan and Vice Mayor Trupiano, had both support our, our recommendation. Next slide, please. I thought that it was important to see the visual, so that the public can see the visual, and so when you look at the current organizational chart, this is prior to mine and Regina's arrival. You have the City Manager, and then moving from my left, you have the executive, assistant to the City Manager, HR Manager, which is vacant, you have the City Clerk position, you have the Finance Director position, which is vacant, and you have the Community Development Director position. That is, that, and you can see underneath the next level, underneath the City Clerk, is you have the facility, facilities, administrative assistants, which is a part-time hourly position, limited to a thousand hours a year, but they help with the reservations of, of facilities and help provide support at the front desk. You have current, the, the, the assistant office, the, sorry, the office to the far right, lower far right, you have the Office Assistant position, which is also, plays a role of code enforcement. That position is vacant, and as we go through the budget process, and we're making this recommendation more formally when we come forward, we'll be looking to council to support our recommendation of outsourcing code enforcement. So, you know, that's another position that, that is still in, in discussion, but not yet been brought to the Budget and Audit Committee for, for action, or to, obviously to the council. Underneath the Finance Director position is the current Accounting Technician position that we're recommending be elevated to accountant, and then under the Community Development Director, in addition to the Office Assistant Code Enforcement Officer, you have the Assistant Planner position. Next slide, please. So just to see the visual of what we're proposing, now you have the three positions, which is the Administrative Services Director position, be helpful if I put my glasses on, the Administrative Services Director position slash Assistant City Manager, so that's the combination of the HR Manager and the Finance Director. Underneath that person would be the Accountant, and right now you can see on the screen at home and in front of you, a shaded position for Analyst. We're not recommending filling this position at this moment, but we are recommending that we put this into the list of, of positions that will be approved in the budget, but let us get through the first quarter with everybody in their seats and see what needs we have in, in the Analyst position. As I've shared with staff and shared at the Budget and Audit Committee, that could be a, a Finance Analyst, that could be an HR Analyst, that could be a Management Analyst, that could be an Analyst that works in public works. In larger cities, larger cities have Analysts, and they have multiple Analysts in every department. I think for our scale, we're seeking one Analyst, but I think we need to get through the first quarter, see what, see how we're doing in terms of operational needs, and then we can, if we need someone to help more in finance, in HR, or in general, like a Management Analyst, then we can come back to council and ask for a budget amendment to fill this position. The administrative, going, continuing along the bottom of this org chart, you see the Administrative Assistant is now under the City Clerk, and the City Clerk Assistant to the City Manager. So they are going to help assign work, so as work comes down from the City Manager's office, or from the council, or up through the community, that Administrative Assistant won't be just solely under Community Development, it'll be available for HR, Finance, Community Development, City Manager's office. The person will support the administrative, the administrative offices, not just the Community Development Department, and work at the front counter, which is where the person was working before, alongside the Assistant Planner. We kept the facilities attendant in here, although it's part-time, normally you wouldn't see a part-time position on your, on your org chart, but because it plays an important role in terms of your facility rentals, and there are also revenues associated with his role to offset that, that person's costs, I think there's additional conversation to be had about the role of the Facility Attendant position and, and its admin support to the team. And then last is underneath the Community Development Director, we left as is, the Assistant Planner position, and so no change, recommend it on, on Community Development or the Assistant Planner at this time. This, I, I would take is no secret, I know it's no secret to the council, but your Community Development Director has also accepted another position with another organization, and her last day is on June 9th, so we are looking at, at how we're going to move forward with Community Development. Dana and I are working very closely on evaluating the needs of the department and what our options are, and we'll come back to council on, on the 4th with a recommendation on how we propose to move forward with Community Development. Next slide, please. So I've asked Regina to step in here, because I like the team to all play a role here, and so I asked Regina just to go through the fiscal impact quickly, and then, then we'll get to your questions.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening again, council. So with this slide, what we're going to show is that when we combine the Finance Director and the Human Resources Manager positions, there is a cost savings of approximately $52,000. When we add the difference in the salaries of the Accounting Technician and the City Clerk Assistant City, Assistant to the City Manager, when we move that Accounting Technician up to the Accountant and add this, a City Clerk Assistant to the City Manager, we come up with the total savings of approximately $24,500. So then we move on to the recommendations.
So as we started, and as in the staff report here, our recommendation is to reclassify the Accounting Technician position to accountant, to reclassify the City Clerk position to City Clerk Assistant to the City Manager, add the position of Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Director, and amend the City of Clayton salary schedule for the three positions. Regina and Elsie, our HR advisor, and myself are available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the City Council? Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. One is also, I just want to make sure I'm clear, the Accountant position will become full- full-time, correct, with this?
That's correct.
Okay, which it's not right now. And you'll come back to us on June 4 with recommendations for community development. And then this, the reason I am in favor of this also is there's some succession planning in here, too. It's, you know, setting us up for, I know we don't have a permanent city manager yet, but it'll be nice to have that number two person in place, even when this new city manager is on vacation or busy. We've got that, kind of that person in training waiting in the wings. So I think that was my only question. That's it.
She gonna answer?
That wasn't, that wasn't a question.
Go ahead, Jeff. I thought, I thought she was gonna add.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. So this reclassification or the consolidation of the two positions, when we are talking about our salary schedules and available positions, does this necessarily close the position of finance director?
It's, that's an interesting question. And going to Vice Mayor Trupiano, in, in the ideal situation, you would have a class of positions. And so in a larger city, you would have a accountant, a senior accountant, a finance manager, a finance director, and administrative services director overseeing that branch. So I probably, to make this clean, I would eliminate those positions now, the positions that would not, you know, the accounting technician position and, and the finance director and the HR manager, I would remove those from your schedule with a caveat, and like that these meetings are recorded, that in the bigger discussion, when you do your class and comp study, and when you're really looking at the organization at a larger scale, I think that it's important that you look at what positions would be valuable for succession. And, and let's go to planning as an example, because I think that's probably the easiest one for the public to understand. We don't need to have multiple positions, but we need people in the position to be able to grow. So to grow from assistant planner to associate planner to principal planner to planning manager to director, right? So that same person can grow in the organization. You're not adding all those positions, but they continue to elevate. So when your director retires or moves on, you have someone that has learned the skills and built up. And so you would have those potentially in, in your salary structure or your staffing structure, so that you wouldn't be coming, you wouldn't come to council to justify the positions, they would already exist. You'd come to council to amend the budget to populate those positions.
Thank you. Either way is fine, I think. As my, the only reason I asked the question is, you know, one of the, one of the big drivers for this is the consolidation of positions, and it yields that savings. That would be moot if we then turn around and fill a finance director position at the same time. So I'm not sure what prevents that from happening, but I want to make, and I know that's not the intention. So as long as that's clear, then I'm, I'm good. I think the consolidation is really the key, as long as we don't then fill all the available slots.
Regardless to who sits in this seat in the future and who sits in the administrative services director, assistant city manager seat, your town wouldn't benefit from having an administrative service director and a finance director. We evaluated the accounting technician position, and we felt that it would be better served with an analyst, you know? And so again, if that's an entry-level analyst that has the ability to grow in that position over time, so they stay, if their, if their work is in finance, or you move that analyst as smaller cities do, to go work in other departments so they continue to grow professionally and get additional experience. So I, I think it's cleaner right now to have those positions shown as they've been consolidated into this. And then you all, when you look at your class and comp and your positions going forward, start from, start from scratch, really start from the beginning and evaluate based on the information you've already received and information that you'll receive going forward. Although 2023, May 2023 is just a year ago, we continue to evolve. Cities continue to evolve and the needs continue to evolve. So I think that you're going to want to relook at, at that study and potentially working with your, with your new team, see, see what information we can bring forward as part of the next year budget cycle.
Thank you.
So I'm looking at the item that says, based on salary savings due to current vacant positions, there'll be no fiscal impact, and there's a potential savings of $20,000. Great. But I'm looking at your org chart that shows there are nine positions in the previous organization and nine positions in the proposed organization. Just move the boxes around a little bit. On a fully burdened, fully, 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 all positions are taken and assigned, is the same, is it still a $20,000 savings or is it a significant, what's the difference in a fully burdened staff between the two organizational charts?
Yeah, the, the brief answer is that you'll, you'll still benefit from those savings because those benefits that other employees would have received would go up as well. So as, as costs go up, you have two positions, those costs would continue. So you're not, you're not, the, you're not, it won't become more expensive. It should maintain those same costs. But I, Regina, if you have, if you want to expand on that, you know, I welcome you to expand on that, based on the work that you and Elsie did when, when evaluating those salaries.
Can I, before, I think you may have misinterpreted the question. When you said burden, I think that you interpreted it to mean benefits, but that's not what you meant.
If we had last year's organizational chart completely full of staff, we would have a cost of X. With this proposed organizational chart, which is the same number of staff, just moved around, was the cost, is it going to be X minus or X plus? I'm just trying to figure the difference between the cost.
I know the answer. And it's, the, the savings is really a result of while the same number of FTEs may exist, those FTEs will, will be at a lower rate. So if you look at the prior org chart, you had four at the mid, at the first level, and in the future one, there's three. So in other words, one of the FTEs got reclassified, not reclassified, was, is at a lower rate. So while the same heads are there, their total comp will be lower, and that's where the savings comes from.
I, I think, you know, the eight positions, if you're looking apples to apples, that's without the analyst position. So right now, it's, we're going from eight to seven with a future draft pick, you know, with a, with a, with a player to be named later, based on the need. That, if, if the city moves forward and fills that position, then there'll be a net cost, because right now, we're saving $20,000. But if you fill that position, that cost would be closer to an 80, you know, probably a $60,000 to $80,000 position for an analyst. You're saving 20, there'd be an increased cost when you fill that position.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chilman?
Thank you. I'm trying to, the account tech was part-time. They weren't 100%. Even though they were working 100%, they weren't compensated that way. I'm trying to understand the difference between the 100% account tech position, which we're now, I think, classifying as an analyst. I think you just said it might be between 60 and 80K maybe? Can you repeat what you just said in your answer?
The analyst position, yeah, it would range somewhere between 60 and 80,000.
Okay. And then how does that compare to the current account tech salary? And what I'm trying to understand is, is 89,000, which I think is what is proposed here, the accurate amount for an accountant position at 100%? And what the difference is between that and a part-time account tech, the current salary?
Regina, I'm, I'm looking quickly here, but my understanding is that the current account tech position is roughly 77,000. Can you?
That's correct, Adam. The current account tech position's currently about 77,000 per year. When they move to the accountant position, they move up to about 89,000 a year. The, 89,000 is on the low side of the accounting survey, but we're also asking council to authorize staff to do a full classification and compensation study with this board or with this council action.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So I'm trying to, so if part-time account tech is a little over 77,000, and I understand you're doing, go ahead.
Sorry. The, the 77,000 is based on working full-time now. So once, once property left, your finance director left, Jennifer has been working full-time. So that 77,000 is based on her full-time, working full-time, not her 60% time.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me. Regina, I don't know if you can go back into the staffing slide based on our previous conversations, but it, it should show what that position is budgeted for at 60%. But prior, you know, prior to my arrival, she was elevated to working out of class full-time, and I believe that's the 77,000.
Thank you. And then the other question that I had is, how common are finance director slash HR roles? I know that I've seen that on several people's resumes. I'm just curious how common it is. Should there come a time where we need to fill it again? I'm just trying to understand, are we hamstringing ourselves by combining those two? It doesn't sound like it, but I want some reassurance and would like you to explain.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's, that's a, that's a good question. And I, I think after the recession in 2008 and 09, when we really had to cut budgets and positions, and I was city manager at the time, that's when a lot of cities consolidated HR and finance. And the unfortunate part is that, well, poor choice of words. I'm a park and rec person, and finance is always difficult on park and rec. So when I say unfortunate, I'm saying it politely. The administrative services director has to be a finance person. That's got to be their core responsibility. The HR piece is a secondary piece, and usually, and you see this pretty consistently, you have outside support either through legal or through an HR consultant that comes in because you have a specific project. It may be updating policies and procedures, or it may be a significant event that's going on, or leading training, or what have you. So HR seems to get farmed out a little bit, but you want someone that has enough experience in HR and can continue to get educated and, and trained on HR issues, but their core skill is finance. So you see a lot of smaller cities making that, that move, which has helped the city manager group because you now have someone that's getting a lot more experience overseeing two, two departments versus just, just finance or just HR. So now they have the HR experience on top of it.
Adam, and, excuse me, but on that note, another place that you see it more frequently even than at smaller cities are special districts, special districts. Your water districts, your sanitation districts, because they are the size of a small city and they, they don't have the budget to support both finance and HR. But your good administrative director will have, like Adam says, will have a very strong finance background, but because of their role, they're, they have to go and learn more about the HR side of the business.
So then would we need to, what would we need to do? In this, so let's say that this is approved tonight. Would we then need to contract out a third-party HR firm? I'm trying to understand how that piece works, if you can tell me.
So currently, we have an HR advisor through, through a firm that's, that's Elsie. So she's here at least during this transition. Once we fill the administrative services director position slash assistant city manager, assuming that the council approves that this evening, and once we fill that position, then we'll look at, do we need, how much HR support do we need? You, you, prior to my arrival, you had another HR, you still have it, another HR consultant that also has been working with your former HR manager, Amy Walker, doing special projects. That list is on Stephanie's table right now, and she's very excited to meet with Elsie tomorrow to shift some of those projects on, on, on to, on to Elsie. So that's why we're saying, give us some time with the analyst position, because whomever fills the administrative services director role, if they have a strong HR background too, then maybe we have someone a little bit more of a utility player available. But if they don't, well, then maybe we look with someone with some HR. Your uniqueness compared to any of the small cities I've worked for, and I've only worked for small cities, you only have 26.6 employees. My smallest city, you know, had over, you know, over 40 employees. You know, my largest was, as city manager, was 180 employees. So there's not a big HR function because you don't have the volume of employees. The majority of them are in police, which is a, and compliments to your chief here, you know, well-managed, they have hierarchy in terms of, of officers and sergeants and chief and support staff assigned to this. So they, they have a management structure there that, to support their, support their staff. Your other largest group of, of employees is in your maintenance division with six. And, and, and again, currently, because of the change in promoting your supervisor to superintendent, and then what we're doing, working with Larry to bring Larry more into the, the mix with public works, we have a little bit more structure there. So from the, from, you know, from, from my seat right now, I think, I think we are in a good position to manage HR with a little bit of consultant support based on need. Something more serious, you're bringing in the city attorney's office and their, and their team to help give, provide direction. And if you, for whatever reason, you end up hiring, you know, another 20, 30 employees, then you're going to want to evaluate your, your HR, your HR needs. So that's just where we are, you know? And, and I think we'll know a lot more after the first quarter, once we have people in their seats and we actually start doing the work.
Any other questions of the city manager on this?
Well, the only other thing I just want to add is that for the, I always want to get this title right, the administrative services director position will also, upon approval tonight, then we'll be posting that, right?
Right, so that's why Elsie's role is really important. You know, we will, we will post that position and we'll go through the recruitment for that position, and, and then hopefully, in, in the near future, be able to come back and, and formally introduce the position with, to, to the city. You know, it is important to note, and I know it makes people uncomfortable, that salary is competitive, but it is still below the market. It's, it's competitive, but it's below the market, and it's $230,000. And so I want to say that out loud, and I want people to, to recognize that it's competitive in Contra Costa County, that we looked at all of the cities in Contra Costa County to, to look at the assistant city manager, administrative services director. Those positions are fairly comparable in, in what they are paid. And so that's, that's why we're recommending that the range for that position be, I believe, 185 to $230,000, based on their qualifications. And, you know, so that, that is a discussion we had with the budget and audit committee, and they supported that recommendation.
Anything else? Going to open it now for public comment on this item. I have no cards, so anybody in Hoya, please come up. I have no cards, so anybody in Hoyer, please come up.
James N.K., Clayton resident. A few quick questions. I just heard from the city manager that our salaries are close to competitive. As a, you know, person in the community, I would strive for competitive or highly competitive, including above. We're in a situation, we've had significant turnover, especially in the city manager position in the last eight years. You know, I'm looking at staff and our city leadership. I think it's time that we find a way to find the money, and I don't know if that's a bond measure, taxes, whatever we have to do, but we really, everyone on my block, the people at the school I talk to, I feel like it's time to lead, and you guys are all doing a fantastic job doing so. I can't wait for everyone to come together as a team. The city attrition, I'm curious, did we perform exit interviews for any employees who have left in the last year, and did you guys all receive feedback? No, is that something that the city does or has done in the past?
The city, since I've been here, done exit interviews.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I'd love that information shared with the council, and I think it's important to share with the public why people are leaving. You know, I think about leadership, pay, wages, work conditions, and, or were people just ready to retire? Maybe that was the reason, but it would be important to know. I also think geography might play an effect. I know coming over the hill can be significant for people in traffic that live a little further away. Lastly, you know, I know many people have viewed the former city manager's letter expressing his reasons to leave. I just, I think we need to take an honest, hard look at this moving forward. And lastly, yeah, I thank you all in advance for your leadership and support on this topic, and thank you, staff, for filling the roles. It's really important to our residents.
Thank you. And James, would you please fill out a card so we have you on record for this item? And here comes a member of our community financial sustainability committee.
Good evening, council. Yeah, as a member of that committee, I've been to all the Budget and Audit Committee meetings, plus we had our own meeting, and I heard this idea on the fourteenth. First of all, this is what a good city manager looks like. This is well thought out, he specifically talks about small cities. Not that we want to look like some other city, but this is how small cities operate. Also, our finance person, Regina, right now, fantastic, what we've been getting from her. We get numbers quickly, no resistance when we ask for numbers. What a concept. I think this is a very good idea. I support it one-hundred percent. It changes the organization, and as council member Juan pointed out, you're getting rid of, excuse my military comparisons, but it's what I know best, I got four captains and I got four privates. You get rid of one captain, you've got room for a lot of privates. That's what you're doing. And the, I think that the city's current problems really are financial right now. Four years ago was housing, now it's finance. That's really what needs to be looked at, and this does it, this accomplishes it. I do want to thank the city manager, Regina, council member Trupiano, I know how hard you've been working on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Frank, please fill out a card and make sure that she knows you're on record here. Thank you. Anybody else here in Hoyer Hall that wishes to address this item? Seen anybody online?
There are no speakers online to this item.
Thank you very much, closing public comment on this item, and bring it back to city council for any, oh, excuse me.
City attorney just pointed out, you know, Regina and I knew to this process a little bit in terms of moving forward. We're, we put the dollar amount in the resolution versus the range, and we need to actually show A, B, A through E, or I think it's A through E. So we would, you folks can approve and bless the direction. We'd come back at the next meeting with the resolution with the full range, salary range identified. So if you look at, if you look at the attachment, which has the resolution, and it shows in there the title, accountant, city clerk, assistant to the city manager, and assistant city manager, that should also have administrative services director in it, that would then have boxes that go all the way across from A, so that one-eighty-five to two-thirty would have incremental increases between the, one-eighty-five to two-thirty. So we need to come back and clean that up. We'll do that at the next meeting. You still can take action to approve the requests, and then it'll become final once the resolution is approved.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Kind of put on my readers here. Was, I, I'm ready to move forward with this unless there's other discussion. So I would, I would make a motion to advance the recommendation in the staff report with the caveat that our city manager just offered, that we will have to do the formal resolution with the steps, as noted. But the motion would be to approve directionally what is indicated in the staff report. Do I need to read the whole thing?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Juan and seconded by council member Tillman to move this item forward as presented, and will the city clerk please take the role?
Thank you, and for the record, that is just approving staff's recommendation, and staff will return with the resolution at a later date.
Thank you. Correct.
And on that motion, council member Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, you have five ayes.
All right, thank you very much. And since it's nine o'clock, nine oh one, I'm going to take a short break before we go further because I try to target, just for you to know, between eight-thirty and eight-forty-five, if we're going to go beyond that, which we are because we have another meeting right after that, but we'll take a short ten-minute break. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
I want to make sure I get that correct.
Right, right. We're waiting. I have to take a moment. Okay. I was like, I want to start going to the.
I have to look at the requirements.
Yeah, I was thinking a month ago.
So this should all.
So this should all.
Okay.
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 So this should all.
an awesome tour director. She should have been a cruise ship director because she's so good at that. And it was it was just fun to have them present their ideas for what they think should happen in the city and just being really engaged. It was it was an awesome experience. I also really enjoyed playing in the Saturday, May 11th, Mount Diablo Education Foundation Bachi Tournament. My team did really well, just missed the playoffs, dang nabbit. And then on Saturday, the 18th, I went on the Clayton Garden Tour, which is a benefit for the Clayton Historical Society. And just really, some of the homes were fabulous, and one of them had live music and and art. It was just just seeing people I hadn't met in Clayton. It's funny, as you get out to and do these things, you meet people. It was great to get out and connect again. And as you heard in public comment, a lot is going on getting ready for Clayton Pride Parade, which is happening on June 2nd. And we're knee deep, elbow deep, and almost up to our neck in it. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. End of report.
Thank you. Council member Juan.
Let's see. I think I think all the time taken from last meeting was with budget and audit committee meetings. So thank you to staff. It's our city clerk who helped facilitate a lot of those and finding our availability. So thank you very much. Tonight was part of the result of that, and I think there's more to come. So it's great for that. We Vice Mayor Trupiano and I met with the Special Events Committee meeting, and I will let her talk about that. And a lot of discussion around some of the events going on around town. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended on the 11th, the Mount Diablo Education Foundation Bachi, I have to Bachi Tournament that we hosted. I was trying to get a figure to to everyone to say how much we're able to donate to our local schools, but that is not available yet. I will let you know at a future date. But I do appreciate everybody who attended. That is one of the boards that I sit on. I had several pride parade meetings as we're coming to less than two weeks before that event, and we are excited working with the police department to make sure that we have additional security onsite, as well as making sure that we have all of our additional parking for people at our elementary school and our middle school, et cetera, to be sure that everybody has a good time and there's no impact on neighboring neighbors in the neighboring communities. On the 15th, I had a meeting with the League of California Cities East Bay Division Board as we're getting ready for an upcoming meeting with the League of California Cities later next month, as well as our Bachi Tournament with Cal City PAC, which is our political action committee. What's the matter? Oh, okay. And that is at the end of June. And I invite all of my council members to come and join me. We formed a team last year. I would love to form a team this year. And then I was also interviewed yesterday by one of our Diablo View Middle School students. They were looking for leaders in the community, and I did about a 15, 20 minute interview with them for their final project. And lots of conversations about, thank you to the police department for giving us the updates on NICSIL that were being pushed to my phone, as well as the city staff updates that we can let the community know about the planned burns that were on Mount Diablo. I know you guys still fielded a lot of questions, as did I. My phone was blowing up. So thank you. It was helpful to get those alerts. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Trupiano.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, along with Councilmember Juan and our city manager and Regina and Stephanie for organizing all of our weekly budget and audit committee meetings. The next one is June 3rd. And so and I think 4:00 PM. Weekly meetings with our city manager, Adam Politzer, which have been wonderful. Oh, and I forgot. The first thing I wanted to say was congratulations, Stephanie, and congratulations, Jennifer Giant Valley, for your new positions, for your promotions. I'm so happy. I just think you're doing an amazing job, Stephanie. I wish Jennifer was here in person. I will tell her I can't tell you just how invaluable your work is and what it means to our city and our staff. Really, it's I'm speechless on that. Oh, the Girl Scout. I thought that was one of the cutest visits ever. And the mayor kicked us off that day. And then the highlight was visiting the police department, and the sirens were running, and the lights were flashing, and they were in and out of the cars. And oh my God. And then hopefully we'll get some of those recommendations. They all some were on scrolls. They were all handwritten. They were very, very cute, but they had some great, great recommendations for us. We've also been meeting. I had a one-on-one with our city manager recruiter, Gary Phillips. Then Peter and I had a meeting, Councilmember Cloven and I had a meeting with Gary Phillips as part of our ad hoc committee to kind of we're moving the process forward. I did have a Clayton Community Library Foundation meeting. Diana Bauer is the new president. She was instated that night. And we've, of course, got a refresh on the horizon. They are looking for board members. And they had one of the best book sales ever in April since before the pandemic. So that's good. Next one will be in October, and I'll get you those dates. We also met with the PFC on Friday, Councilmember Juan and I, because Concerts in the Grove is happening this Saturday. It's our first concert. Leo Vigil and his Rockin' Horns are kicking us off. Bring a sweater. It looks like it's going to be a little bit chilly, but the PFC is going to be raising money for their elementary school. I was also on the garden tour, and your wife was a docent, and I saw your daughter was there, also Eliana. And so it was nice to talk to them. The garden tour was amazing. I went with my good friend Gloria. And then we had our city-sponsored Special Events Committee meeting, which feels like a million years ago. It was just yesterday. We're just kind of tying up the loose ends and finishing up the marketing. Sponsorships are done. And we're just waiting for a final list of expenses and revenue. And we'll probably have a financial report at the next meeting in June. That's it.
Thank you. On my calendar, as Councilmember Cloven noted, that we were here, and I believe also the Vice Mayor was here on the 8th to have the Girl Scouts tour City Hall and the police department. It was well received by them. I understood they love the gavel. They love the gavel. Okay, on the 9th, we we had a closed session to discuss the procedures for the city manager recruitment. Later that evening, I went over to Pittsburgh to attend their first car show, which was absolutely amazing. They had probably 200 cars out there, and the place was just jam packed. And I hope everybody had a wonderful. The ladies had Mother's Day on the 12th. On the 13th, I attended this Bay Area Affordable Housing Bond Meeting, and I had and I asked the city clerk to distribute that to everyone, because they are going to come in at a future to be determined date to make the same presentation to us and let us know how it's all going to work, who's going to get the funds, and what they're going to what they're going to support and so forth. So we'll see that at a future future meeting here at Hoyer Hall. On the 15th was Peace Officers Memorial Day for them. On the 16th, County Connection Board Meeting. And then I had a meeting with the interim city manager as we are advertising for an appointment to the Advisory Committee to the County Connection Board. Clayton hasn't had one in a while, and it'll be on the website probably in June, because they'll have a revised agenda package and other materials that County Connection is going to be going to be presenting. And it's a good, good organization. They advise the members of the County Connection Board on all the things that go on to making this whole bus system work. And on the 21st today, we had the I had a pre-city council meeting with the city manager. And then, of course, we went into closed session at 5 o'clock to begin the interview process for the city manager. And last but not least, on Monday, the 27th is Memorial Day, and we'll be hosting a ceremony down at the Grove Park along with the City of Concord. We do Memorial Day. Concord does Veterans Day with combined sponsorship with the United States Marines and the VFW Local Chapter 1525. And that concludes my report.
What time? 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. Grove Park. Okay, that concludes my items for report. And now I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:22 PM. And we adjourn to our next city council meeting on Tuesday, June 4th. And now I'm going to turn it over to Chair Peter Cloven for the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District Meeting.
Greetings. It's 9:22, and we will call to order this meeting of the Oakhurst Geological Hazards Abatement District. Regular meeting at 9:22. Could you call the roll, please?
Okay, Director Tillman.
Sorry, I was in the middle of yawn.
Here. Trupiano?
Here.
Juan?
Here.
Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Cloven.
I'm here as well.
Thank you. Have a core.
Onto item number two, public comment. Are there any members of the public out there want to raise their hand? Or anybody online?
There are no members of the public online for this item.
With that, we will close public comment and go on to item number three, which is consent items. I see an item for the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody have any comments on the consent item? I will call for public comment on consent. Are there anybody members of the public who want to discuss the consent item? Anybody online?
There are no members online discussing.
With that, we will close public comment on consent. Can I get an action for approval?
Move approval.
Second. First by Councilmember or Member Tillman, and second by Member Juan. Could you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Director Diaz. Tillman?
Aye.
Trupiano?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Chair Cloven?
Aye.
Thank you. Have five ayes.
With that, the consent is closed. And we move on to our action item number four. And our city engineer is ready to go.
Good evening, Board. This item is a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District. It has a plan of control in addition to authorize myself, the general manager, to prepare an engineer's report based on the updated plan of control. So before you tonight is basically the memorialization of our discussion back in December. So it's been quite some time of the levels of responsibility, maintenance activities, generally the approach the GAD will take in managing the not only the open space areas, but the private properties within the the GAD. The overall plan of control supersedes the previous one from 1990. It does not make a major change in the sort of levels of maintenance or types of monitoring activities. It further memorializes it, provides a little bit more detail as to the frequency of these types of activities. It does make some small changes relative to what's considered a geologic hazard, removing creep from one of the what's defined as a hazard in the First Amendment, focusing mostly on landslides and erosion. The other element that I would like to point out is in the section 5.1, which is defined as the funding limitations, staff included two paragraphs essentially addressing sort of the elephant in the room of the need for additional funding and the current situation and potentially a future situation where if there is no not enough funds to complete the required elements within the plan of control. We included a statement essentially in and this will happen in successive steps following this meeting. But eventually, if the property owners within the GAD do not vote in favor of raising the assessments to the level that's required as per the new plan of control, that there'll be additional notifications sent out to those property owners, basically providing them notice that their property is more at risk, and the reason being there's insufficient funding to perform the duties. The currently, every year, and we're about to go through this actually in two weeks, is we put together annual engineer's report. And right now, we're collecting about $50,000. And we have to do the steps necessary to put down the assessment. As part of that process, this board actually mails individual letters to every property owner that's paying into the assessment, private property owner, and notifies them of the public hearing that's upcoming and allows anyone to come and speak to the item. I'm proposing as part of if, in the event the ballot measure is approved, that we add additional language in that same notification every year. So that way, the public is aware. And because it's assessed on the property, you know, these properties will change hands. So someone may not know the current situation. And this provides, I believe, more transparent, you know, approach to or transparent note notice to the members of the GAD that currently, well, in that situation, there's enough funds to address the maintenance activities, let alone a major event. I believe at the last December meeting, we discussed potentially putting together a separate plan of control that would be within the budget. But discussing it further and ruminating more on it, I don't believe that's something that is really likely to happen. You need a licensed geologist to prepare a plan of control that's required by the state laws. And I'm pretty sure there's not going to be a geologist that can sign off on a plan of control that only has $50,000 relative to the size of this. So I believe this option tries to address that potential outcome of not of having a ballot measure pass. And then frankly, the GAD will have to decide, obviously, with whatever funds it has, if it does pass, then, you know, how it wants to allocate in the future. So tonight really is about the first step of getting this plan of control on the books. The idea is if you're going to go request for addition, all ballot, you know, additional assessments on a ballot, it's important to have a document that's current. And given the last, the current one is, you know, 35, 34 years old, this is, I think, a first good step. What we're requesting tonight is then to take this document, work with an assessment engineer to prepare a separate engineer's report based off of this proposed budget for this plan of control. And then bring that engineer's report to the Board of Directors for approval. And then we'd request you authorize a ballot measure vote among the property owners, which is generally a mailed ballot. So that assessment engineer, which is more process, will come to that meeting and explain that to the board. Tonight, we have Richard Johnson, who is the licensed geologist on his plan of control, available for specific geotechnical geological questions. But the elements in here, like I said, are from the December discussion where we took your input essentially on different elements of monitoring. We included essentially everything that was proposed. That was the direction of the GAD, and that's what's put in the plan of control. The overall cost, which will be flushed out in the engineer's report, but we, you know, we did that process in December. We estimated it's probably around 250,000 to 300,000 of the required activities on an annual basis. That doesn't include any reserve for capital replacement or an emergency reserve. That could be a future discussion if you want to add additional money to the assessment. I do think there's obviously going to be a lot of strategic thinking in how much you want to set the assessment because you want it to pass. So that'll be at a future date. But this is that first step. Our goal is to bring back an engineer's report. It'd be in about two, three months. And then there's going to be need to be an education process to the community or these property owners in particular. And I I think we should target a vote in spring of '25. That'll allow the board, you know, maybe four to six months to be able to educate and, you know, provide the outreach, and then have a outcome in the spring before the next sort of setting of the budget, which usually begins in March to, you know, June timeframe. And then if it is passed, then the collection of that assessment wouldn't actually happen until the '25, '26 year. So it'd still be a year behind, but at least you know where you're at. So that's my overall report. Happy to take specific questions about any process. And then if there are questions on the geologic nature, Richard Johnson is available. We don't have a specific presentation on the plan of control. It's attached if you have any specific questions on the technicalities he's here. Thank you.
Larry, the one question that I do have. So the process is you'll come back with an engineer's report two to three months. Then we have an opportunity to educate the community, mail out the ballots, and then get a vote on by, say, spring of 2025. If that ballot measure goes down, voted down, you know, folks in the GAD do not vote for it, what is what what happens then?
Well, pardon me. Some of the items that I discussed in the staff report. First, I think we would, as per this plan of control, start the notification process. That doesn't obviously solve your financial, but at least that is an element of putting people on notice. The GAD is going to have to decide based off its $50,000 budget, you know, which generally half of it is administration just to do the tax role, you know, what you want to do with that $25,000 a year, which, you know, you could do, just hold on to it and wait for the sort of literally rainy day for something to happen. You could use that dollar to do some monitoring. You could use that dollar to do some monitoring. Or to a certain degree, you have to decide, I think if you already had the vote, you know, you, you kind of know the situation. But one element is do you deficit spend for some period of time and then collect the money back? I think those are all things that the board has to make the tough decision on, recognizing, you know, you did go out, tried to ask for additional funds to do what's necessary. You know, based off of that amount, it really is a matter of do you just save it or do you still try to look at stuff and identify beforehand, which then leaves you nothing, right? But at least you may see something. So that's a decision the board may want to decide is do you keep looking and then find money however you want to go deal with whatever you find or you just wait until it happens, which in this case is major, right? I mean, we're talking about landslides here. So neither is a great option. And I would, I think that discussion, I think everyone's sort of prepared for it, but you know, you have that discussion after you have the ballot. And if it goes down, I think you spend those months between, say, March to July really hammering out how you want to go forward.
And so my only follow-up question then is, is one option, if that's the case, a dissolution of the GAD district?
Yeah, and I put that in there because that is allowed in the code. Just to be clear, the board would have to, as a majority, have to put that before the voters again. And then the, the majority of the property owners by value, 50% plus, would have to also dissolve it. Doesn't solve who is going to then own those properties, maintain them, so it's not by any means just wiping your hands of it. I think it's just a step in changing how you want to approach. Now you won't have any assessments, but you also won't have technically the responsibilities of, you know, if there's an event. But people can sue each other all the time, so I don't know if it goes completely away, I would say, but you, you could take that approach and, but those property owners would have to make that decision as well. Because as the, the elected board for the city being the, the head of the GAD, that step is necessary per the state laws.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I'd also like to add, I forgot to mention in my report, was as we're going through the ballot measures process, one other element that needs to be addressed is making sure that the city-owned and the GAD-owned parcels are also included in the assessments to make sure it's correctly, you know, divided across all the properties. As you're aware, there's multi-tiers already. I anticipate there'll probably be some similar tiers again in a, any raising of the assessments, given that the risk is not equal among each property out there. So I think that's going to be pretty consistent.
You said city-owned and what-owned?
GAD-owned properties.
Oh, GAD-owned.
Yeah. For example, the North Valley Park is a city-owned parcel. So that, you know, has value to it and should, needs to be considered in part of the assessment.
Okay, thank you.
On a macro scale, annually, what is the income to the GAD currently?
$50,000 right now.
And if I heard you correctly, you said with your recommendations for this amendment, you're saying there's about $300,000 annually worth of maintenance which is proposed for the project, for this?
Correct. $250,000 to $300,000. I would generally say the current rates need to be raised five times, to five to six times, just for performing the requirements of the plan of control. If you wanted to add elements of saving and creating an emergency reserve, which most GADS do, then, you know, say you collect 500,000 a year and that extra 200,000 is for the reserves, obviously you're now 10x now. Obviously, the higher it gets, it's probably going to be more difficult to pass. So I think there is probably some, some discussion point of where you want to set that number at.
Is it correct to say that the $300,000 budget for the plan of control is a minimum amount necessary to do what's necessary?
Yes, it is. I, I think what's identified in the plan of control is what we've estimated previously. So to sort of cherry pick it apart, I think is something that is not probably doing a good service to the GAD itself and would also need to be, you know, something that the geologists had recommended and, and, you know, put their license out in front to say this is what's needed to really properly review, keep an eye on these things and to be able to respond in the, you know, when you are starting to see some issues arise.
And even with the two, the $300,000 budget for the plan of control, it doesn't really focus on the engineering necessities for new inclinometers or actually monitoring the existing inclinometers for water and movement. Is that correct?
The budget included monitoring, doing some inclinometer monitoring. That is part of this plan of control. So when we looked at the costs back in December, that 250 to $300,000 included that. Now, there are some inclinometer or pezometer that is sheared, so there's some one-time costs that we would have to include, but generally in the scale, it's still in that 250 to $300,000.
The other thing I wanted to ask about was your statement about property sales in the GAD in general. What type of notification is included in the transfer of property indicating that there are challenges currently?
I don't believe there are any, but I'm not the realtors for these properties. I believe, you know, for the most part, most, I think homeowners get notice of what's on their tax bill. And that's probably the extent of the information they receive. Now, they could obviously look up the GAD and, and do more research, but I don't know exactly what would be handed over in this transfer of sales process. But it's included, usually the, the assessments on your property is, is information that's typically shared with a potential buyer.
When, can I just jump in really quick? I live in the GAD. When we bought our home in 2003, when you're signing the documents, that's part of the documentation that you, yes, they have to disclose it when they sell the property. So we knew before we finished signing. Yeah.
I, I don't know in regards to specificity or question of, does the property owner know the current budget status of the GAD?
Yeah, we did not.
Probably not.
Yeah.
That, that I think is another element we're trying to add if this ballot measure doesn't pass, right? Is that making it transparent? It's like when you buy into an HOA and the HOA is like dramatically underfunded and then you have a big bill when you get there. It's like that.
So my, my question is, I mean, for tonight, the idea is just to approve this, this plan of control, this is amended plan of control, and just see where the chips fall as far as where the, the cost estimate comes back from the engineer so that we can present this to the residents at some point. Is that, is that the deal?
Yeah, that's correct. I think unless you have specific, you know, requests to change some element of the plan of control or discuss it further with the geologists, I think having a discussion of the cost and how much, you know, sort of we're budgeting would come at the engineer's report, especially when we're talking about if you want to include a reserve or, you know, you know, getting into the details of the cost per type of monitoring or something that we can provide more information on.
I have no more questions, thanks. Any other questions? Go ahead.
The only one that I have so far is, and I don't want to wordsmith the whole thing, but in number six, the prior, prior, oh my gosh, I can't even speak, prioritization of services. It references, and this is on page 23 of 33, if you're in the PDF. It mentions an approved, a policy that was approved in May of 1998 and it prioritizes of expenditures and what to do. For public safety, for example, is the first one. Resources shall be used to secure the safety of public and private property, et cetera. Do we, I'm assuming you guys are still in agreement that this priority is, is fine?
Correct. I think we're restating it and I think we would like to continue to follow it.
Fantastic. And then the only other one that I had is, where did it go? It's 5.1, 5.11, no reimbursement of expenses incurred by property owners. Can you just describe this just a little bit? So it says the GAD will not be obligated to reimburse a property owner for expenses incurred for the prevention, mitigation, abatement, or control of a geologic hazard absent a written agreement between the property owner and the GAD to that effect, which agreement has been executed prior to the property owner incurring said expenses and following an investigation conducted by the GAD. Can you explain to me how all that works?
Well, I would take one step back, right, and key in on when the GAD is triggered to come in and address landslide movement. So, you know, just as an example, say there is a, there's a landslide and a home was affected, just that one property, the GAD would not be, have to step in in that situation. It's within a one single property. However, if it extends beyond one single property into, say, two private properties or within the private property and open space of the GAD, then it would also trigger. So that's the overall intention. I believe this section is to address, one, where someone may have done some work and they're trying to come back and ask the GAD to reimburse without had, maybe the GAD had no knowledge about it and now, so that's one element. The, the other element is, I think, relative, if it's only one property, then it probably will fall into that same category where it wouldn't qualify. And I think there could be a situation where we do need to work with a property owner or a property owner is in a specific situation. And the intention is that that property owner will work with the GAD manager and the GAD board, obviously, to consider what that improvement would be. And so having something in a written agreement would be key so that way it's clear on, you know, if the GAD is participating because it deemed it, it is something that qualifies, then it may be paying through that particular property owner because they have a licensed, you know, geologist involved or geotechnical to address it, that we could work directly with that property owner. Like I said, it needs to trigger, it still needs to be in the qualified event, but I think the last element was just to make sure that it's not a handshake deal, that type of situation where it's very clear, like if we're participating, it needs to be in writing.
Thank you.
I've, you brought up the priorities and I, I just, for some reason I missed it. But there are six A through F, and this is the same page 23 and it bridges page 24 of the PDF. The fourth one, item D, says resources shall be used to increase the reserves. And that comes before the repair of public property and the cleanup and repair of private property. That's the only one, I would say, like item D should probably be item F. But it's not a big deal. But that I would put item D last in boosting the reserves in lieu of repairing public and property damage. I think it's a fair comment. If the board would like us to direct us to make that change, item D to become item F or the six. Just go last. To be priority, we can make that adjustment prior to the final approval. Anyone have an issue with that? That's it.
No other comments from council or questions from council? We will open this up for public comment. Are there any members in the audience want to raise their hand? Any members online that are available?
There are no speakers online that would like to speak to this item.
With that, we will close public comment and, and bring it back to our members of the board. And I'm looking for an action to, a motion to adopt the resolution, the Second Amendment.
With that, last thing that we just said, I would move approval.
I'll second it.
I got a first by Member Juan, a second by Member Trippiano. If you don't mind, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Director Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Trippiano?
Yes.
Juan?
Aye.
Chair Colvin?
Aye. With that, action number four is passed unanimously, five to nothing. And we'll go on to item number five, my favorite point. We are adjourned this meeting at 9:50 PM.